Let us pray. Lord, as we come before you tonight in the name of Jesus, we're thankful to be gathered here. Thank you for your son and what he done for us so long ago. I pray, Lord God, that you would honor this meeting tonight and those who are in attendance. I pray, God, that all those things will be done here this evening regarding glory to you, God, and to the benefit of our county. Lead, guide, and direct us. Watch after our families, our community, and our country. And we'll ask these things in your precious, holy name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, veritable, and just as a trial.
Thank you all. You may be seated. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Here.
Here. Here. Here. Here.
Don Hutchison.
Here.
Chris Rogers.
Here.
David Lockhart.
Thank you. Next is the reading of the minutes, please, Madam Clerk.
The Grand County Court had its regular call meeting on January the 27th, 2020, at 7:00 PM Central Standard Time. Inside the Grand County courthouse with all nine commissioners present, court was opened with prayer and allegiance to the flag. Motion by Don Hutchison and seconded by David Griswold to approve the previous meeting's minutes. Voice vote motion passed. Motion by Danny Lusk and seconded by Gary Burr to approve the January 4th vote motion passed. Motion by Danny Lusk and seconded by Mike Cordell to approve the following citizens' notaries, those being Tyron Burnett, Rebecca Folds, Abby Elizabeth Fitz, Barry Rollins, and Susan J. Sees, and Roque on Island I, Zero A, motion passed. Motion by Don Hutchison and seconded by Mike Cordell to approve the second reading of the single island local census. Limit resolution number 90-12-98. Roll call Island I, Zero A, motion passed. Motion by Mike Cordell and seconded by David Griswold to approve engineering contract OLG, urgent care home office. Roll call Island I, Zero A, motion passed. Motion by David Griswold and seconded by Danny Lusk to approve Platteau-Turner's pilot resolution, number 20-1-27A. Roll call 79 to NAY, motion passed. Motion by Don Hutchison and seconded by David Lockhart to approve the website contract approval, CPDC-Maging Grant. Roll call Island I, Zero A, motion passed. Motion by Gary Burr and seconded by Don Hutchison to approve the emergency 911 reinstatement of city's resolution number 20-1-27B. Voice vote motion passed. Motion by Kelly Gibbs and seconded by Mike Cordell to declare Grand County Tennessee a golden sanctuary. County resolution number 20-1-27C. Roll call Island I, Zero A, motion passed. Motion by Don Hutchison and seconded by Mike Cordell to approve land proposal for urgent care. Roll call 8Is, one pass, Daniel Cracktree and the Conover Bridge. Motion by David Griswold and seconded by Mike Cordell to approve limited use industrial road Tracy City and Matumbo. Voice vote motion passed. Motion by Danny Lusk and seconded by Mike Cordell to approve budget amendments for funds 141, 151, 101. Roll call Island I, Zero A, motion passed. Motion by David Griswold and seconded by Danny Lusk to approve six-year appraisal plan, resolution number 20-1-27D. Voice vote motion passed. Motion by Mike Cordell and seconded by Kelly Gibbs to approve CBVG grant for food bank building, resolution number 20-1-27H. Roll call Island I, Zero A, motion passed. Motion by Danny Lusk and seconded by Gary Burr to approve sewer rate resolution number 20-1-27E, option B, ordered by Tennessee wastewater board. Voice vote motion passed. Motion by Gary Burr and seconded by Don Hutchison to approve the updated National Guard building election use contract. Voice vote motion passed. Motion by David Griswold and seconded by Danny Lusk to approve the MLB Big Creek Sewer Billing Resolution, number 20-1-27G. Voice vote motion passed. Motion by Mike Cordell and seconded by David Lockhart to approve the mayor's office request to surplus two old office computer towers. Voice vote motion passed. Motion by Gary Burr and seconded by Chris Rogers to approve support for attending care Medicaid to reimburse ambulance rate no less than current Medicare fee schedule, resolution number 20-1-27H. Motion by Gary Burr and seconded by Chris Rogers to approve rural development infrastructure grant for $45,000 and the county's portion of $2,369. Roll call Island I, Zero A, motion passed. Motion by Danny Lusk and seconded by David Lockhart to adjourn. Voice vote motion passed.
Any discussion on the minutes as read? Any changes to the minutes as read? Do I have a motion to approve? Motion by Commissioner Hudson to have a second. Commissioner Griswold, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Previous minutes are approved. Thank you. Next is the approval of the business agenda. We have removed item I, which is the maintenance contract. We removed that. And we've added item J, which was the Highway Department's request for trucks. Any other changes?
Mr. Chairman, I think there's a representative of the chairman for the school board this year tonight. The head of the school board. Also, could we add recognition in support of the county day of prayer?
Add that to new business?
Yes.
County Day of Prayer, support recognition, item K. And Chairman Lusk for the school board. Any other changes to the business agenda? I have a motion to approve. Commissioner Hudson to have a second. Mr. Lockhart, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Agenda is approved. Thank you. Next is special recognitions and memorials. Mayor Brady.
I do, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Citizens of Grand County. Tonight, we want to honor David Brent Myers for his service. Law enforcement is very dangerous and demanding line of work. The role of sheriff was not only one of protector, but one of manager, budgeter, and facilitator. The sheriff is on call 24 hours a day, a week. And on this evening, we'd like to express our sincere appreciation and present the family of David Brent Myers for the resolution of special recognition. At this time, I would like to read that resolution. And the resolution reads as follows. It says, "Resolution Number 20-2-24A. A resolution to recognize Mr. David Brent Myers, former Grand County Sheriff. Whereas Mr. David Brent Myers was a resident of Grand County, and whereas Mr. David Brent Myers served his country in the United States Army, and whereas Mr. David Brent Myers was appointed to the position of sheriff for Grand County in 2005, and served two terms ended in 2014. Served as citizens of Grand County for nine years. And whereas Mr. David Brent Myers currently serves as citizens of Bradley County, Tennessee, as an officer at the Bradley County Sheriff's Department. And whereas Mr. David Brent Myers passed from this life on Wednesday, January the 1st, 2020, after a lifetime of service spoke to his beloved fellow man in law enforcement in the United States of America. Now therefore, let it be resolved by action of the Board of Grand County Commissioners, meeting in regular session this 24th day of February, 2020, Grand County expresses its appreciation to Mr. David Brent Myers and his family for years of service to his fellow man, both in Grand County and for his country."
This time, do I have a motion to approve this resolution?
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution is approved. At this time, we'll take a brief recess to break the fast. If you would, let's stand and give this family another hand. Fowler, made him back to order. Still in resolutions and special recognitions and memorials. Mayor Brady.
I have one more, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Citizens of Grand County. Tennessee is known as a volunteer state. But you will not find any better volunteers than right here in Grand County. Each year, we take the time to spotlight two volunteers, both an adult and a youth, that put forward effort to help their fellow man and make Grand County a better place to live. When thinking of volunteers, you cannot help but think about the concept of service. Teresa Campbell and Andrew Barrett serve their fellow Grand Countyans while making Grand County a better place to live. It is a great honor that we pause and congratulate them tonight and thank them for their dedication to Grand County. So I'd like to read a little bit about our Volunteer Star Awards. I was able to attend in Franklin these folks from Grand County. And as they were honored, they're other governors' Volunteer Star Award staff. Teresa and her husband, Teresa Lizer Palmer, and they spend countless hours assisting the Grand County Food Bank. Teresa makes at least one trip a week going to Chattanooga Food Bank, to Walmart in Campbell, and the old food bank truck to gather up thousands of pounds of food for local citizens of Grand County. She also assists with organization of the food each week to ensure that everyone that is in need gets something. She has been actively involved in raising funds to help keep the food bank active. Many weeks, she has spent every day volunteering her time working to make sure that the people of Grand County don't go without. Teresa also volunteers to assist in other organizations in Grand County, such as the South Tennessee Human Resource Agency, SATRA, on their commodity day and others. Teresa's always helping her neighbors too by taking them to Doctor's Point's grocery store and assisting with other errands. Mr. Andrew Barrett is the son of Aaron and April Barrett of Altamont. He has been chosen as a Grand County Youth Volunteer for the year of 1990, or 1990, 2019. He is a junior at Grand County High School where he's involved with Youth Leadership Grand, which is an invitation-only class that brings youth leadership to a fuller understanding of their leadership abilities. He is a member of the Grand County High School football team. On top of all that, he is a member of the National Honor Society. In his spare time, he helps cut wood for wells, he mows the yards, and helps people in need. He helps with Pioneer Day at his local church. And he also helps with youth in the community, and he helps clean up with those activities. So this afternoon, when I have the Grand County and the Grand County Commission, I would like to present you with a certificate of appreciation for Grand County for your dedication and I hope the Grand County a better place.
Yet this time, we'll take a brief recess. This time, we will continue on. That concludes our resolutions for special recognitions and memorials. This time, we'll move on to appointments and confirmations. We have several here for notaries. What we do is we ask you to please stand. State your name and your reason for your notary, please. You would stand if you're here for a notary. We'll start on my right front row. Go ahead, man. State your name and your reason for your notary.
My name is Davis Sanders. I'm working for the Department of Westside City and having a notary in the office for the service that we offer in our community.
Okay, thank you.
My name is Nicole Maynard, and I need it for my position at Russell Maynard's Law Office.
Okay.
My name is Laura Jones, and I also need it for my position at Russell Maynard's Office.
Okay.
Sam Stansberry. I am president of Versus Springs. And I have recently moved here, and I need that for a client of mine who I represent out of state and in-state with closings, document preps, and things of that nature.
Okay.
My name is Melissa. I don't have any notary in our, in our community. And I've been asked many times if there is one. I said I would be one.
Good.
I'm Melissa slash Lisa McCord. I'm a CMFO recorder for the City of Auburn. I'm also the supervisor of Grand County Special Education Office. So I would actually use that in multiple ways in both businesses.
I'm Debbie Woodley, CMFO, city recorder, C. Edgar Luger, and I need it from my office.
My name is Tyco Warke, and I plan to use wine to help my fellow veterans who are hospital bombed at the Canadian Hospital in Nashville and Maroon.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Chairman, do that the proper paperwork for all of us. Okay, looks like everything is in order. We'll address these all at the same time. Do I have a motion to approve this notary? Commissioner Brewer, seconded by Commissioner Gibbs. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Gary Burr.
Yes.
Mike Cordell.
Yes.
Daniel Cracktree.
Yes.
David Griswold.
Yes.
Don Hutchison.
Yes.
Chris Rogers.
Yes.
David Lockhart.
Yes.
And Don Hutchison.
Next is reports. County officials, special committee, or standing committee reports. Do we have any at this time? Ben Dunn, do we have any beer license? This time, we'll move on to our business agenda. If you would, turn over to your business agenda. First item on our business agenda under new business is the library board appointments. This is confirming the appointments. Which two? Kristy Teasley and Ms. Bonnie Summers. Any discussion on this? Do I have a motion to confirm these appointments? Commissioner Griswold to have a second. Mr. Cordell, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Those appointments are confirmed. Thank you. Next is the resolution number 20-2-24B. Refugee camp resolution. Mayor Brady.
Mr. Chairman, the paper texted. Commissioners, Citizens of Grand County. As you know, we talked about this in length at our workshop and the recent governor's decision to have certificies opt-in to the refugee camps. This resolution, I think, states our position on this. And it says, "Be it resolved that the Grand County Board of Commissioners in Grand County, Tennessee, does not want to be forced into participating in the federal refugee resettlement program due to either Governor Lee's consent and/or being within the permissible placement radius of a resettlement agency office. Be it further resolved that the Board of Grand County Commissioners of Grand County, Tennessee, request that in the event Governor Lee does not retract his consent for initial refugee resettlement, that he submitted a revised letter of consent to the U.S. Secretary of State, Mike Pompeo, and Lieutenant Governor Randy McNally, and House Speaker Cameron Sexton, is entered non-consenting counties from being forced to participate in the initial resettlement and refugees in Tennessee. Be it further resolved that the Board of Grand County Commission of Grand County, Tennessee, requests that Governor Lee, by written notice, inform the resettlement agencies from which maintain offices and operations in Tennessee that they may not place arriving refugees in non-consenting counties. This resolution shall become effective on the passage of the public welfare required."
This is resolution number 20-24B. Resolution of non-consent to refugee resettlement in Grand County. Any discussion? This will be duly adopted by the Board of County Commissioners the 24th day of February, 2020.
Motion to adopt.
Motion by Commissioner Brewer to have a second. Commissioner Gibbs. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Gary Burr.
Yes.
Mike Cordell.
Yes.
Daniel Cracktree.
Yes.
Kelly Gibbs.
Yes.
David Griswold.
Yes.
John Hutchison.
Yes. That is approved. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Next is item C, engineering contract. Mayor Brady.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Citizens of Grand County. As you know, that OLG was awarded the contract for the CBVG grant that we have applied for to build the food bank, to build in their, behind the Live Choices Center. They submitted a contract. I submitted it to Mr. Reader for review. There was some portions of that contract that he wanted some revisions. He had sent help to OLG. At this time, I will let the county attorney address those concerns they have with the board.
Their concerns are not very many. First of all, Mayor Brady advised that the contract would be contingent upon the county obtaining the CBVG grant. And I wanted a provision in there specifically stating that it was conditioned upon that and that neither party incurred any rights and liabilities until the grant had been awarded and the county had instructed OLG to proceed with the work. The second matter relates to it being contingent because it says that services not completed within 12 months of the date of this agreement through no fault of the engineer architect shall be compensated as additional services, which is considerably more since it is recognized that the work won't be starting on the date of the agreement. I wanted that provision to read that the owners would then, instead of the disagreement, substitute the words, "Upon receiving the owner's notice to proceed." And then, Article Six deals with rights and liabilities of the parties regarding the owner's budget for the cost of work as referred to in the initial information section. The information section does not have owner's budget for the cost of work. And so, for that reason, I suggested that they put, that they inserted the owner's estimated budget in the initial information section. Excuse me. I wanted to leave that section altogether since it is meaningless. The only, the other one, actually, there's two more. One where it says the parties waive all rights against each other for damages covered by property insurance. That's pretty standard in most all construction contracts, but I think it's dangerous for this reason. The law in Tennessee is that an insurer is subrogated to the rights of its insurers. In other words, if we had damage done to something and we collected property insurance, we collected from it, and it was due to the fault of OLG, the insurance company would then have the right to go against OLG to get that. If we, by executing this the way it's worded, that would prevent the insurance company from doing that, and that could void the coverage. Because you can impair your insurance carrier's rights that way. And also, the way it's wording, it would come back to the property damage. If they denied coverage, it would still go to OLG because then there wouldn't be any insurance to cover. So I've suggested that that provision be deleted or language that would essentially make it meaningless. Finally, the other thing that is, they had two different numbers for the cost of the project. They had written out in words $62,000, and then in parentheses, it had $51,500. So, you know, we gotta get the, those two numbers have to match. And then, there was a couple of provisions, one on arbitration and one on another method of payment that's not being used. And those should just be eliminated from the contract to avoid any confusion. I talked with Dean Oliver this afternoon. He does not think, he doesn't see any problem. I talked with Dean Oliver this afternoon, he does not think, he doesn't see any problem with those and I think we'll have a contract with those provisions tomorrow. I'd sent him the, our, I'd emailed him a copy of what I'd sent to the mayor and he said he didn't receive it and, and looking back, I forgot to copy him with it, so he got it this afternoon. If there's any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Reader? Do we want to address this with the understanding that upon Mr. Reader's recommendations, that we approve this contract with his recommendations and how we will proceed with this?
I'll make a motion to that effect.
Okay.
Contingent upon, I said the language that Mr. Reader pointed out to us.
Okay, Commissioner Brewer makes a motion to approve the contract for OLG, contingent upon the recommendations of the county attorney. Do I have a second, by Commissioner Cordell? Roll call please, Madam Clerk.
Gary Burr.
Yes.
Mike Cordell.
Yes.
Daniel Cracktree.
Yes.
Kelly Gies.
Yes.
David Griswold.
Yes.
Don Hutchison.
Yes.
Danny Luss.
Yes.
Chris Rogers.
Yes.
David Moncar.
Yes.
It is approved. I failed to state that this is pertaining to our food bank facility. It's a contracted and engineer group to hopefully get that underway as soon as possible. So I know we have some concerned parties about that, so that is concerning our food bank facility. Next is the Big Creek, approval for Big Creek to direct the sewer infrastructure grant. Mayor Brady, you want to address this?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners of citizens of Grand County. As you know, we have applied for and we have a grant contract in place for the infrastructure grant. This is pretty specific on what it can be used for and so our grant will be used for mapping of our sewer system. To me, it makes sense that since Big Creek, we're doing our billing and other things, that we let them direct the grant to make sure that the software fits their system and the requirements that they need. And so I'm just asking the commission, it will still be our grant, but under the direction of Big Creek to direct the grant.
Any questions for the mayor? I believe this is a forty-five thousand dollar grant that.
It is, Mr. Chairman.
Any other discussions? Do I have a motion to approve the mayor's request? Motion by Commissioner Griswold, do I have a second? Commissioner Hudson, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Next is the approval of the Grand County road list. Mr. Folt, do you have anything on this? Okay. You all have a copy of the road list, do I have a motion to approve? Motion by Commissioner Luss, seconded by Commissioner Cordell. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Road list is approved, thank you. Amendment to the purchasing policy, Mayor Brady.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners of citizens of Grand County. Currently, in our purchasing policy, it requires anything over ten thousand dollars to bid out, even though if it's commission approved or whatever it is, anything to bid out and that's understandable. One thing, years and years ago, the purchasing policy set a limit of anything of a thousand dollars that it has to be competitively quoted. That really impedes our office and I'm going to give you an example of that. The other day, whenever we had a leak over at the jail, to fix that leak, something that was costing a lot of money and damage, according to our purchasing policy, we had to get competitive quotes because it's going to be over a thousand dollars. And so the amendment that I'm asking for, again, it's not changing any of the purchasing power, it's just stating that, that that limit will be raised to seventy-five hundred dollars. It's the current limit is a thousand dollars, our quote shall be changed to seventy-five hundred. Purchased made from seventy-five hundred will be the minimum required by the statute for bid will be still ten thousand dollars. It would just, in some of those situations where we come across those instances, it will make us have a lot better ability to keep from having damaged property and conserve the citizens of Grand County better.
Any questions for Mayor Brady? Says approving the purchasing policy with the two amendments and it's defined in Section one point one and Section one point four as the mayor stated. Do I have a motion to approve?
I'd like to make a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, have a motion, do I have a second? Commissioner Luss, roll call please, Madam Clerk.
Gary Burr.
Yes.
Mike Cordell.
Yes.
Daniel Cracktree.
Yes.
Kelly Gies.
Yes.
David Griswold.
Yes.
Don Hutchison.
Yes.
Danny Luss.
Yes.
Chris Rogers.
Yes.
David Moncar.
Yes.
It is approved, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Next is budget amendments for the one oh one general fund. Mayor Brady.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners of citizens of Grand County, if you'll look, you'll have three budget amendments. The first one is medical insurance. This was an overdraft from the state from our insurance funds. So this was not overpayment to the employees, it was just an overdraft from the county. So we'd like to put that money just directly back into the medical account. If you look at the next one, now this is a, to the sheriff's department, this was a contribution that was received from Colonial Pipeline to be used to assist in the purchasing of an awful vehicle for the sheriff's department and this was a donation by Colonial Pipeline Company. The third one that we had talked about in great length and gave you an explanation, this is a mandate to allocate funds to correct overpayment area that was discovered by the comptroller's office in April twenty sixteen and May of twenty eighteen. And I'll say that dates again because that was a long time ago.
In the Sergeant Corps Clerk's office.
And it was in the Sergeant Corps Clerk's office that there was an area that was found in April of two thousand sixteen and May of two thousand eighteen.
Any questions for the mayor? Commissioner Brewer, budget finance.
It's a recommendation of budget finance commission to approve these budget amendments.
It is a recommendation of the budget finance committee to approve these budget amendments. Do I have a motion?
Some movement, Chairman.
Commissioner Cordell, do I have a second? Commissioner Luss, roll call please, Madam Clerk.
Gary Burr.
Yes.
Mike Cordell.
Yes.
Daniel Cracktree.
Yes.
Kelly Gies.
Yes.
David Griswold.
Yes.
Don Hutchison.
Yes.
Danny Luss.
Yes.
Chris Rogers.
Yes.
David Moncar.
Yes.
And Danny Luss.
They are approved, thank you. Next is approval for funds from gun auctions to the drug fund. Sheriff, you want to address this?
Sheriff, thanks. Commissioners, we're having a gun auction that's been done by TAYS Options in Coop. They've done our last one and what we're asking is this, those guns have come to us about, by different ways as far as the course of our investigations, drug seizures unclaimed. And so what we're asking is that the money from that gun sale just be deposited into the drug fund instead of us having to go through every individual gun, just figure out, you know, if it goes to the drug fund or the general fund. Y'all have the power to do that just through a commission vote. That, that auction will be done in seven days, it's be finished in seven days, so they're on now. And can you state the name of the auction company? TAYS, T-A-Y-S Auction Company.
And the auction's going on now, will end in seven days?
Yes, sir.
Any discussion? Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to.
Commissioner Gibbs, seconded by Commissioner Cordell. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved, thank you. Next is trucks for the highway department. Mr. Folt? It's my understanding that you did learn from Mr. Hayes about the, you want to come up and address that, please?
Sorry to put you on the spot. So we're going through Sourcewell to do this and that, what that is, it keeps you from having to send out bids and that is a government entity and what they do is they solicit businesses or whatever and, you know, so they do all the groundwork basically. And we got, we, the C-Task guy was not really familiar with that name, Sourcewell, but it had formerly, was, was under another name and just changed names and then after we contacted him, I think Mayor Brady talked to him also and everything's good to go and we're good with it. And, and, you know, they receive their money from the vendors that they solicit, so we don't actually pay Sourcewell to do this, the vendors do. And so we have all the bids out or, or, you know, what we needed on the trucks and everything. Everything's the guy who's got it, who's ready to go, you know, getting approval from you guys.
Any questions concerning this? So is this purchasing two vehicles, is that correct?
At this time, yes.
And the amount was one hundred and four thousand, one forty-one thirteen?
For, for trucks.
Okay, just making sure we get this right.
Yes.
Two trucks for a price of one hundred and four thousand, one hundred and forty-one dollars and thirteen cents each. Any questions? Commissioner Brewer, budget finance.
It's a recommendation of budget finance to approve this purchase of trucks.
It is a recommendation of the budget finance committee to approve the purchase of these two vehicles. This will come out of the road commissioners' budget. Do I have a motion to approve? From Commissioner Griswold, seconded by Commissioner Cordell. Roll call please, Madam Clerk.
Gary Burr.
Yes.
Mike Cordell.
Yes.
Daniel Cracktree.
Yes.
Kelly Gies.
Yes.
David Griswold.
Yes.
Don Hutchison.
Yes.
Danny Luss.
Yes.
Chris Rogers.
Yes.
David Moncar.
Yes.
And Danny Luss.
It is approved, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
May it last about forty years. Next is the countywide day of prayer. Ms. Angie, you want to address that or the mayor or?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners of citizens of Grand County. There is nothing that's any more precious that we have, the right that we can do and that's the prayer and the greatest giving, the God's name given us. And to be able to have that in our country and that freedom is, is one of the most valuable assets that we have. As a matter of fact, in our county, you can see the power of prayer as we have a day of prayer every Saturday at a different church in the county where every denomination comes together because we have that in common where we can all reach out and pray to our Lord and our Savior for our county. Some years ago, there was a resolution claiming a day of prayer in Grand County. That day has been Saturday, the first Saturday in March. That means it's coming seventh, I think it is, and then it will kick off on the sixth as, as on Friday, so we'll be kicking it off on the sixth and, and so I'll let Ms. Angie speak on this, but at the end of this, Mr. Chairman, if I could, I'd like to have a vote of support from the county.
We, the agenda for the day of prayer, we'll start off with the Christian athletes at seven thirty at the high school and we wanted to involve the youth this year especially. And we, we went out there and done this before with the Christian athletes, but they are taking a bigger part in doing their own program things this year. At nine o'clock, we'll be here at the courthouse to do the opening kickoff program and at six thirty, there will be a Christian movie night and prayer over here at the auditorium and auditorium. And we ask that you all come, especially if you're able, to be here for the nine o'clock program here at the courthouse to start the day. Invite everybody that wants to come, we'd love to have you here to, to give support for this program. We're very grateful to the commission and to Mayor Brady and his extra man on the, in the getting us started on the day of prayer and the commission has always supported it and we're very grateful to you all.
Ms. Angie, your seven thirty, nine and six thirty, is that on the sixth or the seventh?
The sixth.
That's on Friday, the sixth?
Yes, and we leave Saturday and Sunday, churches do different programs in their own buildings and we leave Saturday and Sunday for them to do their programs.
Okay, so March the sixth, which is on Friday, be at the high school at seven thirty here in Iowa, at Florence Scrubs Building, six thirty, that is. Okay, thank you. We appreciate all that you put into it, Ms. Angie spearheading this every year and getting all this in order for us.
Yeah, it's my pleasure.
It's nice that we have a motion in support of this measure. Commissioner Cordell, seconded by Commissioner Brewer. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners, I would like to say this, this last week, we had our eighty-fourth prayer service in Grand County. Well, we have the number eighty-five, I'd like to invite everyone to come to that prayer meeting. If you haven't come, I promise you that it is a blessing. And this Saturday, it will be at the First Baptist Church in Seattle at eight, at eight thirty.
Next, Chairman Luss, Grand County School Board. And board members, that, security.
In my day, this service was around security.
He still is.
I'm glad that she still is.
My purpose in being here tonight is to talk to you about the Barshaba Mountain, Highway fifty-six, going from Barshaba down into Tarleton Valley. Because of the condition of that road as of last Wednesday, that was the last day that we took a bus up and down that road. Currently, it has been determined that it is not safe for a bus to go up and down that road. In order to accommodate the students that are down there that are being transported to our schools, there's five of them, we have leased a van and we are bringing them up through North Cuts Cove Road. Now, as you gentlemen know, if you've been up through North Cuts Cove Road lately, there's not a whole lot of ability to pass on that road, the shelters are there and everything like that. Needless to say, these students that go up and down through North Cuts Cove coming out of Tarleton Valley, it's a longer trip. It has been estimated about twenty extra miles a day for them at least, so a hundred extra miles per week for them. The reason that I am here tonight is to let you know as a board because we are leasing a van, we're having to hire another driver and those kinds of things, there is going to be some extra financial burden on the board because of that. Also, we just wanted to make sure that you were aware of the condition. Had a school employee talk to someone from TDOT, I believe it was Wednesday of last week, the gentleman said that he was coming daily to check the road on Barshaba Mountain. week, the gentleman said that he was coming daily to check the road on Barshaba Mountain, and in six days, there had been a slippage of six inches. So, that's when the board determined that it was not safe for our students. What we would like to do tonight, one of the things is, what would you like for us to do, to help you? We realize this is not a local issue, it is a state issue, but we're going to have to do something to get somebody to move. Do you need TV cameras? As I told Mayor Brady earlier, some of the TV stations have my home number, my cell phone number, they call me by my first name, so I guess I can reciprocate and do the same. Is this what we need? He did ask me tonight if I would make sure some emails come in his direction immediately, but we need to do something. I understand that Mr. Paul Sherrill has been here, I understand Mrs. Jan Spalding was supposed to be called today, I'm aware that T-Dot is down there, I'm just asking you, help us, what else can we do?
I think from the standpoint of the Commission, the mayor has been in constant conversations, and I'll let him speak on that, with T-Dot, one thing that would be, in my opinion, helpful is that if we had a letter, or an email, or something, from the Board of Education stating what, you know, action y'all have to take for the safety of the children and the added expense, estimated added expense that this has caused upon the school system, and have the mayor pass that along to the state also. And, you know, I don't know if there's something, as a Commission, that we could do as a group to pass, to have that, you know, support from all the Commission, but definitely, I think, in my opinion, that'd be the route we need to go. Mayor Brady?
And I certainly commend the board for taking the real eyes of those children and bus drivers, and ensuring their safety. I'm as frustrated as the board is, as a matter of fact, Mr. Chairman, the Commission, I have been on this since 2015. I actually had a meeting with the Commissioner himself, the sheriff, and some other folks was in that meeting, and we made it easy for them, we colored them, and said, this is a project that is a medium of safety concern, and that was highlighted in red, and it was our mountain route, SR fifty-six, one oh eight. Back in 2015, whenever we started bringing this to our teaching, it wasn't quite as bad then, but they still went ahead and done the Geotech testing. Matter of fact, this is an email that I received just last week, because I had a conversation with Commissioner Clay Wright about it, and explained to him this very good issue. And it says, Commissioner Clay Wright, and I was off on this email, he said, here's a brief history in the background, we've been working on the Geotech engineering on that location of SR fifty-six, the photo that the mayor sent us, sent photos, at the landmark of twenty-six point six, and this is one of three locations of this deep failure plane, and this is the worst of three locations. We have a repair solution for the other two, but we are waiting on the mobilize the three other sites, initiation, a recommendation, also looks like it could be a solid pillar wall, because in the cause, assumption of this, we're recommending that Geotech look back at other auctions, some of the engineering quotes that we got, we're in the estimate, it's three point five, four million dollars to stabilize that area. We're not even sure at this point if solving that one will work, but we are asking for Geotech information to investigate and evaluate this, as well as most effective means to do this. And I know Mayor Brady is probably tired of hearing this as well, but we're working on a solution. So, with that being said, they have looked at this, I think sometimes the best thing to do is just keep, is keep in contact with them. One thing, too, is what I've been told is, when they build that road, they use a lot of the timber for fuel. We all know that when timber sets up, it rots and creates a void, so they're not even sure Geotech just said there was a plain of failure, they do not know if that was even a rock wash, or if that was rotten timber. One thing, too, is they shut down the asphalt, asphalt plants in November, so they can't get asphalt right now. The reason why that person was down there monitoring that, is I asked them to go down there and monitor that every day, but co-pact, whatever they can, get the structural integrity of that, if we ever need to shut that road down until we can get prepared. So I was on the phone today, and I told them that this would probably be an issue that's been brought up, and that we would ensure, like to ensure that there is a fix coming as soon as possible. What would help me is, the Chairman from the School Board will send me a letter outlining exactly what she said tonight, I will forward that on to the proper authorities, and also the Commission, could vote to have me to draft a letter, and that you would request the full support of T-Dot to come up with a fixable, long-term solution for that mountain route.
Mr. Ray, could you come up this moment, please? And your expertise on rail work?
I don't know all of that.
In this matter, would it be difficult for you to draft us a resolution urging the state and T-Dot to fix this matter, and public safety and welfare of Grand County require it? And then, we don't have that resolution before us, but trust Mr. Ray to draft in that resolution, and the mayor moving a copy of that to us prior to sending it out, but we go ahead and approve that resolution, and resolution number here tonight?
I'll make a motion on that.
Okay, a motion by Commissioner Cordell, seconded by Commissioner Gibbs. It'll be resolution number twenty-two, twenty-four C, the title stating resolution urging the state of Tennessee and T-Dot to fix this portion of State Route fifty-six from Barshaba Mountain, the public safety, health, and welfare of Grand County require it. Have a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Madam Clerk, please note the minutes that all the Commissioners were in favor of that resolution.
Thank you, Jim.
I don't know how far that will go, but that will give the mayor some ammunition, along with your letter saying that we had this discussion. Mr. Ray, if you could provide in that resolution what she has spoke about, the financial burden.
I'll be covering her mark.
Financial burden and safety that it has brought upon our children and employees also, and maybe this will help to get them moving on.
The sheriff just said it does help the emergency vehicles up and down the mountain too.
That may be something to be included in the resolution also.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you very much, appreciate y'all being with us. That concludes our business agenda at this time. We will move back over to our order of business. Do we have any citizens' comments tonight?
I want to ask the question, how long will it take to get this proclamation moving?
And pertaining to this road situation?
The road, yes.
Mr. Ray, are we on that tomorrow? And hopefully he can get it drafted and get it to the mayor, and the mayor can email it out to us, and we can make any adjustments or changes and get it back to him, and that should take care of it, maybe a couple of days, Mr. Ray, will that be appropriate timeframe?
I think this list won't be available tomorrow for me to discuss, thankfully, but she will be a day after.
Okay, so by the end of the week? Okay, yeah, end of the week is a hopeful timeframe.
I'll be on the phone first thing in the morning, tell them it's coming.
Also, Mayor Brady, pertaining to that, you made forward in Texas, any of the Commissioners doesn't have Senator Bowman and Representative Sherrill's contact information, and also a contact number for T-Dot, and the Commissioners could also ring their phones and attempt to make contact with those folks. Any other citizens' comments tonight? Any announcements? Mayor Brady?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners of Citizens of Grand County, as you know, Mr. Chairman, the meeting that we had with the Veterans Service District Coordinator, I got this email today, and I know that we were trying to get an alternate location with some more Veterans Services in Tracy City area, and so Rick, which is a Veterans Service Resource Coordinator with the Tennessee Department of Veterans Services, will be holding remote office hours in Grand County on the first Thursday of every month, from nine to three thirty, and that will be at U.T. Exchange and Resource Center, suite seven oh six, one four three seven seven, US forty-one, Tracy City, Tennessee, three seven three, things up. So we'd have our once-a-month events with the Home Guard Department.
That is the part of the water utility building at the old Grand County High School, is that's the exact location. Was he able to provide you with any more of the information we requested at this time?
I'm not able to.
Any other announcement?
I have a agenda of updates, nowadays, in our day. I paid a paper this week, and I also paid on the Grand County Facebook page, so probably, since it was in the TV section as well.
Yeah, I was gonna say, also, they could announce it on CCTV also. Any other announcements? Not sure when this will come on TV, but keep in mind, Tuesday is election day, you're right to go out and vote, so get up, go out and vote, if you hadn't already already voted, we urge you to do that, that's part of our special privileges here in this great country, so we get out and vote, Tuesday is election day. Anything else? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Commissioner Brewer, seconded by Commissioner Law, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
But is it, it's really just the beginning, right? Have you written a book and wanted it published, but don't know where to start? You're not alone. Page Publishing cuts through the confusion that most new authors face, like copyright protection, barcodes, printing, and digital uploading. We will get your book into bookstores now. We guide you through the publishing maze, and help you distribute and sell your work in hard copy and ebook formats. That's right, we will digitize and place your book for sale on Amazon, Apple iBooks, and Google, offering it to millions. Don't waste another minute. Most publishers won't even look at new author submissions, but we're different. We review your book and provide you feedback in about a week. If we decide to publish your book, your work ends and ours begins, from copy editing and proofing, to type setting and book cover art. Our team gets you into bookstores fast.
Call now for your free author submission kit at eight six six two zero four zero nine six five.